There we go. Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to call to order the District of Clearwater Regular Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 1st, 2:00 P. M. And start with the acknowledgement that I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are fortunate to be gathering together on the unceded territory of the Schweppchen, who have been caretakers of this land since time immemorial. Oh, it's gonna take a while to get used to that. Anyways, are there any items that anybody would like to add to the agenda? See, none. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Taylor. All those in favor? The ministerial order is there. I think we don't have to read it, nor do I believe we actually have to pass it. So we'll just note that it's there. Adoption of the minutes. Are there any errors or omissions? See, no hands up anywhere, including online with Counselor Bamford. Are there, would somebody like to move a second that? Moved by Counselor Bamford, seconded by Counselor Frizzle. All those in favor in that pass. No unfinished business, no public or statutory hearings, no presentations, no delegations. Moving on to Mayor's report. There's in canary release there about the hiring of John Thomas as the next Chief Administrative Officer to take effect as of June 28th, 2021. That should be in your agenda. We look forward to Mr. Thomas coming to town so we can start that journey with him. Mayor's report. Of course, I forgot to do one today because, you know, it's one of those weeks, so I'm just gonna scroll back through my calendar since the last council meeting, which was on the 18th. So 19th elective officials call. I've done two mayors vaccine roundtables, conversations, very enlightening to have most of the mayors in the Southern Interior to find out that we're all sort of in the same boat, it being continuously confused as to the vaccine rollout, but it's a great opportunity to ask questions. As noted, there is a clinic next week here in Clearwater for people who miss first doses primarily, as well as seniors of the age cohorts to get second doses. And in some cases, there's a possibility that if you're over 52 days since you got your first dose, that you may be able to access a second dose at this earlier clinic, but don't count on it because the appointments are clicking fast. Last week, I believe on Tuesday, had a call with Minister Lisa Bear, who is in charge of connectivity in British Columbia. Well-rounded discussion about improvements by Telus and Mask On for internet self-service in Clearwater and also a plea for much improved service that Clearwater is still seeing limits for upload and download speeds, don't even come close to the 50-10 upload-download speeds, the federal government has said are required internet speeds for British Colombians as a bare minimum. If you remember our surveys online, we were still having quite a lot of areas where we weren't even hitting the 10 for upload speed, let alone 50 and download speeds were, or three download speeds weren't even hitting the 10. And the upload speeds were one or two, so we're basically in a lot of cases at 10% of the, under 20% of what the national requirement is. Moving on to council reports, Counselor Bamford, I see you whipping your head around there. Anything to report?
No, not really. It took quite a week for me, mostly dealing just with home stuff. But I did attend the Wells Gray Forest Commission meeting last night, and I'll report on that later on.
Thank you, Counselor Frizzle. Smooth mics. Go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that I'm happy to report that I bought my partner for my second vaccine and many of the seniors have too, and they're very, very excited about getting back into the swing of doing things and already planning many events to decide.
The interior health representative, Jane Chaco, is actually bringing tomorrow, she's coming to Clearwater and bringing up posters to all businesses within the District of Clearwater.
Yeah, so there's, there's a call-out process for people that are registered. I strongly encourage anybody, even if you have registered. If you don't in the next couple of days, get an invitation for your second dose in early July. I give it to them Monday. Call and register or make sure that you're registered because unfortunately, because of when Clearwater got its clinical rollout, the online booking system and the island management system happened about April 1st or 2nd. So many of us booked our appointments before that date, and we may not actually be in the system, and that seems to be what's coming up right now. So it's best to double-check instead of this guy.
So the thing with that is, if you go in and register, it will tell you if you already registered. So if you carry on and get a new number, then it's registered again and you'll get a text. I got a text this 3:00 this morning saying I could make my appointment. So it's definitely exciting that we're on that.
Is, is our news, the mayor's done a great job about promoting that. Is our newsletter gonna be sharing that type of information as well? Because again, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's been a bit of a challenge. The information has been changing daily on this, the messaging that's I got on the last mayor's vaccination call on Thursday, not mentioned anything that was publicly announced on Friday, Monday, and this morning.
Yeah, so anyway, the purpose of the question is just to watch those who are not digitally connected and to make sure.
Yes, absolutely. 100% agree. One of the many comments that I've got from citizens is that they completely missed the last two clinics and were unaware until after the fact. So yeah, it definitely reminder to the people that you know that somewhat, you know, it's great to live under a rock, but if you know somebody that is not always aware of these things, reach out and contact them and make sure they get on board with this clinic. Exactly. And then help them get registered, etc. So I think that's your report. Thank you. Counselor Herring is away. Counselor McKenzie driving his big Cadillac or his big convertible.
Thank you, Mayor Blackwell. Nothing to report at this time for me.
Yeah, it's been busy time. Counselor Sim.
Um, thank you very much for that. I attended the TWG meeting, which I'll report on a bit later. And yes, very good news about the interior health vaccines, and I appreciate all the work that's being done with staff and the mayor about trying to get the information out. There was only a 6% uptake for the kids ages 12 to 17. And because that there was some real gaps there, so I'm really delighted about this next meeting. SD 73 has committed in particular to the rural communities is to make sure because we seem to be almost like a test zone. They're, they're trying to services, but that communication piece is what's missing. So I really do appreciate all the work that's being done on that one. Speaking of healthcare, just acknowledging that Dr. Souls is doing a semi-retirement this week. It's been nice to see some of the good comments that are out on the info board and just acknowledging somebody of 30 years who's dedicated themselves to this community, which is exceptional, and the way that he carried us through some very, very tense and awkward times, and he's got a very good reputation on a national level. So I know that council all shares appreciation for the work that he's done. Bike to, Bike Week, I think, you know, went well and, you know, lots of different things there, but it went ahead. So I want to thank the district for encouraging that to move forward. SD 73, it's been really interesting doing the catchment changes in there, and it just demonstrates how communities, when we grow, we need to grow together. And that's our economic development, working with another community organization like School District. So imagine being in a community and you buy your house and then you're told that actually you can't go to that neighborhood school, you'll be moving. And so the planning that's involved in that, it's been really intricate and, and why we all need to work together. Lastly, just reflecting on what happened last week down in Kemalups with the 215 and the missing children. And just looking to see, again, the mayor's been very good about, you know, sharing things out. I'm wondering for our community is if we can help other organizations using the words for the territory acknowledgement because it's hard to find that and people don't want to get it wrong. So if we are, can have found a way to get it right under the partnership, maybe we can share that out. Additionally, one of the things that we've talked about at School District 73 is as though our children are being educated differently than many of our previous generations, it is those dinnertime conversations that can sometimes be where there is the rub or the misinformation. And I am certainly of a generation that I feel lied to and I feel betrayed by my government, and it's a really hard place to be. So if we're able to collect in partnership with SIMP some resources that can allow the truth to be discovered, there's some, you know, some really good books out there and some resources and find ways that we can, you know, show our support in a meaningful way that redirects the conversation of learning and, and points to the issue of truth. And lastly, you know, as we move towards and this world keeps changing, I just want to talk about how as our community starts to open up again is that maybe we've got some ways that we can help people feel safe. We have a number of people who have not seen the light of day for a long, long time and making social spaces friendly and providing what I've called and I've emailed you all on it is handrails on how to do it. And my favorite term is those micro moments of perceived rejection is we've lost what it was to shake a hand and when we are able to open up, if we move forward and somebody recoils and how that microsecond can, can shift things. And even with meetings, how we create some equity, we've learned new things and moving forward. So I just share that because as exciting as it is, I think there's going to be some really profound sensitivities and I'm grateful to be working with the team who's so acutely aware. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Because there was a lot in there. The only thing I'll add is that there was actually about eight or nine versions of the traditional acknowledgement. So yeah, I think we were able to choose one that we were sort of comfortable with, the language was.
I can mail that out.
Yeah, so and I, and I think yeah, that's, that's sorry, that was gonna be my point. It was received from the, the First Nation as, as things, the way they, they liked the wording. So to throw that out to community organizations that wish to do the same, great idea. Some of them actually are, there's even one that suggested that if you're gonna do this in writing, say a signage or something along those lines, we're beginning a report that this, saying it this way in writing makes more sense than it does to some. It's good. Counselor Taylor.
So Wednesday, 26th May, I attended the Trails Task Force Committee. We did a walk down following the trail that's going to run from 37 East down to the River Trail. So excited for lots more trails work this year, so I'm looking forward to all that. Be a nice little trail down to, to that trailhead. And then a couple of things, I just wanted to give a shout out for Meet the Team, the Fire Department's Facebook. I love that. Really, I think it's such a great idea and, you know, maybe other district teams were comfortable, maybe expanding that. I think it's a great way for the community to get to know the Fire Department, and I think that could extend to other district teams. And now I can't remember the other one that was, shouts out that I had, but maybe.
Just interject when you, when you suddenly goes, oh, lightning bolt, here it comes again. Yeah, no, I agree with the Fire Department. That's excellent. There's, there's people that have been on the Fire Department that I didn't really know because some of them are quite quiet. But I think Evan was one of the latest profiles and all sent to, to, to understand a little bit more about whoever it was just through that brief window. Excellent, excellent. Yeah, okay.
So the other thing I
Interject.
So obviously with the restrictions lifting and the kind of restaurants being able to have indoor dining again, but also really kind of excited to see some reinvention of some of our existing businesses, you know, shouts out to the Gateway Grill and their bubble teas and that kind of lunchtime afternoon menu. And that's so great to see. You know, people aren't completely knocked out by COVID restrictions and are actually coming back and reinventing themselves as even stronger businesses and services for the community. Shout out to that.
It's good stuff, for sure. It's a lot, a lot of change in the business community over, because of this, and the reinvention is really nice. Moving on to committees, committee of the whole minutes for active committee.
I'd like to move that the minutes of the Economic Development Committee of the whole meeting held May 18th, 2021, BBC.
Seconded by Counselor McKenzie, thank you. I'll keep looking up at the screen there, Counselor Bamford, everyone, so I'll just so it'll leave you out of this. Thank you. Saw they got a thumbs up. See, look, it's working. All those in favor. That's passed. You're the next one, too.
The next meeting for the Economic Development meeting is July 14th.
Counselor Sim, infrastructure.
We had a meeting earlier in the day and just some of the highlights. Good question. Where's some of the highlights?
Some of them were sewer pipes potentially.
Yeah, it's exciting things that come second nature to me. And so we did move forward for the in, let's, what's Chris's first one? So we're gonna move forward with some safety traffic calming on the intersections of Robson Street, Myrtle Road, and Park Drive. We're gonna move forward with a bit of a study. We have asked that once TMX does some work in that area, that staff loop back and consider some possibilities about some local trap, traffic calming. Is it timed that we consider, you know, just locals only traffic there? Lots of things to discuss, but in discussion at a later date. We were presented with some good reports about some right-in ways off the highway there, which was terrific. And we are also going to move forward with Strawberry Flats and doing a feasibility study.
For sewer?
Sewer.
Yep.
And then in terms of the mobile generator, we received some excellent information and we are going to look forward to a staff report about the costs of how much it would be and working with an electrical contractor to come in to upgrade those systems. What it might be for the district to work with the contractor in the area to maybe rent something, and then the long-term financial scenario, should we want to start saving money? Yep. And then I think that the big news of the day that we want to share out, and I'm gonna certainly give kudos to Counselor Bamford, who has been on this one for a very long time, echoed strongly by Counselor McKenzie is, and Counselor McKenzie, because you're in the room, I'm going to let you announce this great one. Go.
Thank you, Counselor Sim. Yeah, we'll be moving forward with the four-way stop integrated at the Myrtle Crescent-Robson Street intersection finally.
Yes, and I know, thank you, Counselor Sim. Counselor Bamford is, has been kicking this can around at us for quite a long time and Counselor McKenzie has made it a thorn under our side as well, so it's a good thing.
So very good news. Anyway, that was, it was a very robust meeting and thank you very much for everybody's participation and certainly for staff's contribution on.
Excellent, thank you. Good report, long meeting. Counselor McKenzie, you're up next.
Next meeting parks direct will be June 15th.
And Counselor Taylor.
Finance and audit, next meeting is December 17th.
Moving on to standing committee reports, Counselor Herring's not here. We did have a Joint Services Advisory Committee meeting, talk on transit. Pretty much everything we talk about at the District of Clearwater meetings is what we talk about at the Joint Services Committee. Meetings, quite a lot of the same topics come up over and over. Trails Task Force, ooh, walking around in the trails.
Next meeting is June 8th.
And so what's the current project that you're working on? Is there anything that's sort of underway for this summer?
Um, so we have the we'll be able to explain much, much better than I can, but the 37 East to River Trail.
Yes, to the River Access, the Water River Access, yeah.
That's one that we have the grant approved and I think we've pieces of work associated with that. There's also tied into that the parking lot of the Triple Deck Falls. And then we're waiting on news for the grant for the park drive down to the Raff River Elementary. So occasion was submitted, I don't think we've had.
Yeah, yeah. Still incredibly busy group for sure. Thank you. Counselor Fizzle, junior.
Junior counsel's next meeting is in the fall.
Counselor Bamford, online, Foresty Working Group.
Our next meeting is July the 13th.
Still another busy committee. Committee active, Task Force Counselor Fizzle.
Next meeting will be in July.
Oh, excellent. Good. Yes. Committee representation reports, Tourism Wells Gray, Counselor Sim.
So we have a meeting tomorrow, but in the interim, we had a committee meeting that looked at the feasibility of taking over the information center. The current permit holder is, is looking to ease what that might look like and what the cost would be involved in some different things. So some, some very interesting discussions and tomorrow we will be discussing the five-year financial plan.
Think the organization that's running the tourist infrastructure center has been running it, I think, 20, 21 years now? I think they took over in 2001 or two, just before I went to my big contract there. So yeah, it's been a long time, a lot of years of service. Um, moving on to Wells Gray Forest Street Commission Forest Commission, sorry, Counselor Bamford.
Thank you, Mayor Blackwell. Yeah, we had a meeting last night and the big part of the meeting was a really good presentation from Darren Coates, President or Chair of the Wells Gray Outdoor Club, and it was on the mountain bike trails that are up by County Creek. And some interesting facts is that as of 2020, there's roughly 28 kilometers of trail now that's been built. And there was 5,600 user days roughly in 2020. They've got about $500,000 pretty much invested in that area over the past years. And there's now a campground up there with about six sites, which I thought was really, really interesting. So out of that meeting came two recommendations to council, and the first recommendation, part of the presentation dealt with a phase two and three issue where they were looking for $96,000 from the commission and to continue on building more mountain bike trails and continue the usage because it appears that it's becoming a real issue and a real keen thing to do throughout the province and people are actually traveling to use different trails. So the first recommendation is that council support the recommendation of the Wells Gray Community Forest Commission to grant the Wells Gray Outdoor Club funding of $96,000 under the social funding category to complete phase two and three construction of up to five kilometers of mountain bike trails and that the funds be paid upon receipt of project completion report to include corresponding receipts. So I'll move that.
Second. Wow. Seconded by Counselor Sim. All those questions or anything? No, all those in favor? Thank you.
And the second recommendation in the discussion, sir, revolves around the expiration of the commission itself that was set up three years ago. So the the Forest Commission did move to extend the agreement. So the recommendation coming to council is that the memorandum of understanding between the Wells Gray Community Forest Corporation, Wells Gray Community Forest Society, and the District of Clearwater be renewed for a further three-year term, August 2021 to August 2024. So I'll move that.
And we have a second. Thank you, Counselor McKenzie. All those in favor?
It was a good meeting and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor Bamford. Moving on to staff reports. Public Works Equipment Repair is backhoe. There is a recommendation. Questions to staff on this? This is our backhoe that I, I note in the report that there has not been documented repairs by a service agency or company since 2012 on this, I think, in there. I'm sure that some repairs have been done, but I think it's well and truly necessary to keep the backhoe going, valuable piece of equipment. This group?
I'll just make a quick comment. The council did approve a business case in 2020, but we didn't get to the completion of the actual repairs. So that's why, and, and the funding wasn't carried forward to 2021.
Okay.
Basically to get that work done.
Okay, yeah, I seem to remember this. It's, yeah, it's kind of, okay, so there is a recommendations. Counselor Fizzle, did you just move that? I think you kind of just did. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Any questions to staff or no, any questions, comments? If not.
The only question I would get to ask them, I think, was just kind of how it is. But
Yeah.
We just didn't carry that forward.
That's good. I think it's a priority. So yeah, okay, all those in favor? Passes, thank you. Moving on to item B, Development Variance Permit, DPV 2101, and this is about 40 centimeters, I believe, of being offline for a right-of-way. So I think they are 40 centimeters. Yeah, yes. A decent-sized trout out of line.
So basically, the Development Variance Permit application outlines the fact that council could not approve it. However, it doesn't cause a safety issue. Public Works has looked at it. The building inspector has looked at it and essentially they hadn't completed their survey certificate before they poured the foundation. You have a letter attached that's from the owner of the property on page 25. They have completed the survey certificate. That's how we know for sure. You know, it's, it's sort of like a, what people tend to do is they look at the fence line and say, okay, this is where I can do it, and that's what happened in this case. And so there, but the building code separation or spatial separation requirements have been met, so it's not an issue with the building code. So what this report is asking is the council issue and allow staff to issue a notice of intent to consider approval for the Development Variance Permit, DVP 2101 for 345 Holton Street, Lot 65, District Lot 73, Katie White, Plan 22173. So what that means is the mail-in would go to the neighborhood. They would be able to comment on their thoughts. The alternative is if council didn't approve it, then we would have to move forward and ask them to remove their work to this point.
Questions of staff? Somebody, or Counselor Sim?
I, these things are terrible. And I, personally, I love watching all the improvements that are going on in the neighborhood. I think it's super exciting. I, I am just wondering, and I don't know if we've come across this, is there a fine for when this happens or is it just exactly the process that we move forward to?
Exactly the process. You either approve it or they have to remove their construction.
Okay, I'm super excited about.
Somebody wants, somebody want to move it? Oh, yes, absolutely.
I don't have a problem with this. Is this setting any kind of precedent for, like, the movers?
I would hope not. That's my feel. Well, um, I shouldn't speak on my personal behalf, but if you drive by my place, you'll see that I purposely made sure that my garden bed is at the property. So it's a little funny
Yeah.
to line up with the lawn, but maybe that gives people the idea what the actual right-of-way is for the municipal government because at some point you can take back your right-of-way, but people do mow the lawns and why.
But in this case, they're not actually on our right-of-way there. They're within this, within the six meters needed for clearance from the setback of the right-of-way. Okay, so yeah.
So I'll make the motion that we approve the variants.
Or
Or
Thank you. Second, there. Thank you, Counselor McKenzie. All those in favor? Counselor Bamford on the screen and he's in favor too. Excellent. Thank you. There are no bylaws. Yay! Sorry. Correspondence response required. Sierra Club of B.C. It's quite a hefty report in here. It's page 29. There is a June 9th online conference that we could attend, or somebody, somebody wishes to attend it, they could. I think it says decision of council, but maybe I'll leave that with individual counselors if somebody wishes to attend this, just to get a hold of this group. I'm, I'll look at it. I'll read it a little bit more. It does pique my interest. I just don't know if I am available for that timeframe. So just leave it with that one. The next one is UBCM convention on page sixty. This is about government meetings. So this group, correct me if I'm wrong. We, we've, we've kind of penciled in a couple that we need to talk about anyways.
So the first invitation is to the premier.
Okay.
Or from the premier. The second invitation is from the Ministry.
Municipal Fairs.
Municipal Fairs. And then item D is the twenty twenty-one UBCM convention.
Okay.
Additional meeting requests where we listed three that council has talked about over the past few months. And one would be the Climate Change Minister regarding the Thoroughwater River Road. Two is the Minister of Transportation and the Structure on the Wells Green Intersection Roundabout, whichever. And then the Attorney General and Minister Responsible for Housing on Housing.
Sim, go ahead.
My thought is that at this point in time, we don't move forward with meetings and rather wait until the world moves up and send the mayor and the new CAO to Victoria and do three in order. That's just mine. But if there's other information, I think that I'm, I'm open to it, but I having all like all of us sitting on all of those meetings, I think could be very arduous and I'm not sure if our message would get across doing those back-to-back meetings. And I do see that the world is going to open and I see the value of actually making the trip down there because it looks like that will be sooner than later.
Yeah, I, I have a feeling that we're going to be invited to in-person meetings within the calendar year. Hopefully, I mean, there's such a backlog with everything in the world. The only one that I the Clearwater River Road discussion is ongoing. So necessarily meeting specifically at UBCM for that, I don't necessarily know if we need to do that. But I think we should attempt to get another meeting. Miss Grudy, have a comment on that?
I think it would be timely to have, now things have opened a bit, Mr. Stan and come to Clearwater that he's been saying he's going to do for a year and a half.
I think we should.
Invite him up and take him for a little tour and.
I think, I think during peak season, if we can get Mr. Standard to show up, give him the grand tour just so that he can see how busy it is, even with domestic tourism on the ground here, sometime in August would be fantastic, especially somewhere around whatever version of kayak festival is going to happen this year so that we can push the river road thing. And on the other ones, the only reason that I would want to continue with the Minister of Transport and Infrastructure on the roundabout is that we actually have active traffic engineers working in the area. So the ability to, to push at the minister's level, have that trickle down and have them with absolutely fresh thoughts in their head about what could be done to resolve the issues in Clearwater. Do we need that as a ministers meeting at UBCM? I don't know. I, I think it's a meeting that we set up at any other time. I, I do agree that I think where you're getting here is that we seem to get clogged up at UBCM and, and so much information comes in the ministers and their staff that half of it just gets dismissed or it's too much. So.
I would rather send, first of all, I'd like to send our thanks to Victoria because I think they, you know, all ministers have done a really good job. Case in point, Minister Bear calling the district. Like, when was the last time you got, hi, Minister Bear? Let me put you on hold for the mayor. Like, how often does that happen? And, you know, being able to introduce ourselves and start our, our, our new relationships. Because in the past, we had some very innovative ways in which we met with ministers and I think we can strategically do that. And to get our message outside of what is a Zoom fest is just, it's exhausting. And I think we've got some really important things that, that need, need attention outside.
Yeah, I'll, I mean, we can leave this alone for a decision right now, I think, until the next meeting. I'll, I'll get back to council after my T and R D meeting to see. Because technically the River Road is in the jurisdiction of the T and R D. And Counselor Bamford, you have a question or comment?
Just a comment. Um, I'm kind of torn on this one. I, I understand where the mayor is coming from. And I think some of the meeting, if we've invited ministers or even their deputy ministers to Clearwater, like when Ravi came up, we've really accomplished a lot of those things in those meetings. And the other part of me, I have to look out to for Counselor Sim saying that, that the stuff in the past over the last nine years of going in and, and doing the swag to some of the ministers, sort of a thing, I think has served us well. You know, just that face to face a little bit with the ones that are really important to us. And we've come out with some really good actions out of some of those things. So just a shout out to Counselor Sim for some of the stuff she's done in the past.
Yeah, for sure. And, and the face to face is nice and I'm really hoping that everybody, especially ministers and ADMs, et cetera, have so much cabin fever that they want to get out and see the province after your being. So maybe we can snag a few of them and get them up to Clearwater or passing through Clearwater conversations. But yeah, this government has been very good on communications. I complimented both Minister Bear and Minister K, Calon, on texts a couple of days ago on the issue that they're very accessible, especially to its mayors, which is great, and to councils. Um, okay, so I think we'll just leave that one alone for meeting requests and we can come back to that. So moving on to correspondence, information items, support letter, North Sannich, any of these you want to talk to? Barry, somebody, let me know if Barry's waving his hand frequently, wildly. District of Tofino, old growth strategy, obviously in the news, I believe that's actually coming out, Katrina Conway, there's a, this afternoon, there's a big announcement on Forest Street, the NDP's plans for that. Support letter, District of Clans, District of Kent, designation of Asian clams as the base species. Yeah, clams. UBCM Community Works Fund payments, that's gas tax. And Ministry of Municipal Fairs Climate Action Review Incentive Program, CARIP, which has changed. And then there's a notice of motion. Oh, sorry. The money. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Because, you know, you, the finance loves writing reports. I just know they do. So this, at this point is, is sort of stalling of that. Is this a reorganization of that fund or is, we, we, we don't know at this point if this is something? Yeah.
Yeah, they're running a survey, provincial survey right now.
Okay. Oh, that's right. I knew that. Sorry. And Counselor Bamford, this was always a thorn under your side. So, yeah. Anyways, moving on.
Appreciate it, Mayor. I just appreciate it. I just didn't hear Miss Grue because it's just sound, but that's okay.
Okay, yeah. So it was basically talking about the CARIP fund, the, the environmental funds that we're no longer going to be able to benefit or use those funds for projects of our own that meet their, their their past program, right, rules, I guess. So notice of motion, housing needs working group. So would somebody like to move the recommendation? Or comments or questions to staff? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if, if the consideration for having the working group over a task force and what's the difference? And I think that the mayor, you would had the idea of rolling it into something that was separate. I just, I didn't.
So both the task force and a working group are short-term?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, sorry. There's, there's some interest from, from outside agencies, rural development specifically, that might want to help with this and actually maybe even chair it, lead it. So but we're still in development on this. This may be actually a little bit early. I wouldn't be terribly upset if we tabled this for a meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. I, I think if there is another opportunity or another group that want to lead this effort, I could just, I think it's a really, really important thing for us to be working on and contributing towards.
Yeah.
But I worry about just more working groups and like, if we're going to add this, do we take something else off? Or will we just adding and adding because it becomes an overhead with that for staff? And I'm not trying to say it's not an important issue, but like, are there alternative ways we can address the issue before we jump into setting up another board?
Yeah, thanks for those comments. So, so are we okay with tabling this for until at least the next meeting or maybe you in the meeting in July?
We currently have six working groups or task force or committees over and above the representation that we do outside of the district. So your counsel Taylor is correct on that. We do need to be, become aware of. We did change the wording to say engage. I hope that doesn't mean that the district director has to do it. It could be the entity that you're talking about that could be engaged with the district director to do something. But it doesn't have to be specific to mayor and council.
Okay. I'm in favor of tabling this till we have a chance to maybe explore with some outside entities to see whether or not they're willing to take the lead on this so that it's just a matter of myself or a member of council and staff sitting in on one of these once a month or twice a month or start every two months. And there's, there's still opportunities to engage on the housing conversation. It is number one. Was what number one or number two conversation, economic development task force? And, you know, we, we can bring it to council as, and, and in general as well, like we did with.
So your worship, it is my intent. I've been working on a project with our planners to bring back a report to council on what properties are available to develop, what the potential lot sizes could be and so on.
Okay. Any further comments or thoughts, Counselor Bamford, anything?
My only, my only thought is that I think council, I agree with Council Taylor's comments that it is a really, really issue and we've been talking about it for a year. We just need to also keep in mind that we're moving into a real transition period. So a bunch of new things coming forward will just create more things that we'll have to deal with that transition. So stabilizing things for the next six months or something might be a really good idea.
Thank you. So, yeah.
I just want to be clear that we're going to address it at the next meeting. And whether or not we do a working group, whether or not we do just a meeting based on the report and get some ideas about developers and so we're sharing information, maybe it's not, but we are starting to engage other people. It would be, and having that pass over probably between Miss Grue, who's always done the economic development. That is a part of it and just engaging people so that plans don't move ahead at a super lightning fast speed. And we go, wait a minute, we've got these needs. So I, I pausing and slow.
Agreed.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I, I think that's it. Like, we're really good at adding things onto the plate. We're not really good at taking things off. Let's make sure we've considered all the options before we add something new because once we add it, it's probably going to be there a while.
Here, we just want a proactive conversation because it is important.
Yes.
And options.
So we'll, we'll table it till the next meeting. We could table it again at that next meeting theoretically. But that will give us time to flesh out some of the other options.
But not as long as the four-way stop sign.
No, the four-way stop sign is happening. Okay, so where are we on the regular agenda here? Two, three, four. I just moved my pages too quickly. Other business, just your clear water promotional material, otherwise known as swag. Who at the table would like to talk about swag? Oh, Counselor Sim.
Me? Oh, my gosh, I wasn't prepared.
I thought it was Counselor McKenzie.
Um, so we, so in, in sort of discussions, it's always nice to have it. I always like swag because it's, it's gestures from the community. I'm excited about exactly what the mayor had said, maybe cabin fever and seeing more people and having stuff on hand so that we have gestures. It's been memorable. I think it served us well. I would look at it as an investment in our relationships. In some cultures, this is how they do things with a gift exchange and it would just be nice to have our coffers ready. Miss Grue had Andrea do an inventory of what was there. Some of the things that have proven to be quite popular in the past are the barbecue aprons. We've also done some great ones with fleece blankets and they, they're really well priced right now, like so inexpensive. And I'm guessing that's because swag hasn't been purchased for so many conferences and that. So there's lots of things that are available at prices we haven't seen for a long time. They've been invaluable. Our tumblers, I believe that we've seen them on several ministers as well as premier's desks. And they are there because they're there. So I'm, I support this moving forward and, and having it available and whatever staff feels that we need to purchase. I make the motion.
So Taylor.
Can I add that we explore options for leveraging one of our favorite community businesses, the actual applying logos? I don't know who we typically would use.
I think we put it out to Tinder. We have, we have.
I, I think I'll, I can step in on that one if you'd like, is that, um, yeah, we've always looked to local, but sometimes capacity hasn't been able to make that happen. And so it's always a top of mind for sure.
You know, plan, let me explore options.
Yep, agreed. And, yeah, for sure. That's, that's definitely happened in the past. If there's opportunities there, it's always worthwhile to me. Counselor Fizzle?
From what I understand, the Rotary wants to have a parade for students along. So that might.
Candidate parade, yes.
Candidate day parade. So, you know, some then that would be good.
Yes, in honor of a former counselor or whatever, you know, maybe disco for speech anyways. Never mind. Because that, you know, it is, technically it is a social distance activity and still, and it's some dents in the car. So anyways. Is that the end of the discussion? We, we don't necessarily need to sign a budget or anything to that at this point. Excellent. We'll just, we'll just leave it at that. For now, yeah, so, so we'll, we'll leave it to staff and those interested to work through that.
Long as we've got sizes for our new CAO.
Anyways. Moving on to comments from the public. Do we have any public online that wish to comment?
No, I'm good.
You're good. Thanks. Now you're good. Another Zoom meeting. Yay. So that leaves us to special business. We do have an encounter meeting that we have to move into. There is a recommendation that the meeting be close to the public pursuant to sections ninety-one K of the community charter to discuss matters relating to negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of a municipal service that are at the primary, at their preliminary stages and that in the view of council could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they were held in public. Can I get somebody to move that and second that move by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, all those in favor? And let's take it, we're going to go with a five-minute recess, ten-minute, five-minute recess.
I need a separate length.
You, yeah, you will. So we're going to do a ten-minute recess because there's going to be technical. So we'll see you back online at three o'clock-ish, if that works.
Three o'clock will be fine.
Yeah. Free usually works for Zoom meetings anyways. Thank you.